There you go. Now, I'm on. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Hamlet City Council. Our first item on the agenda tonight will be a moment of silence. I just want everyone to bear their heads, please. Amen. Council, you have before you tonight the agenda for the meeting. We'd also like to add on a closed session for attorney-client privilege. That will be added on as item number 11A.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda with the amendment for the closed session.
Can I have a motion?
I have a second.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Thank you. Council, you have before you the minutes from the September fourteenth, a regular meeting, and you should have had an opportunity to see the closed session minutes. What are your wishes on those?
Move to approve.
A motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion, changes, deletions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Might mention that Maurice will not be with us tonight, and he's excused. We'll move along to item number five, which is comments from attendees. If you have something tonight you wish to tell the City Council, please come up to the podium at this time. Okay. State your name.
I'm Jean Douglas, again tonight.
Okay.
First, I would like to thank you all for, I have seen some improvement down in this situation that I brought to the council last month about everything in front of West Hamlet Street. In this store, I have another name. I've seen patrolmen on duty. I still have some concerns about that area, but I have seen where the City Council is trying to work in that area. The chief of police called me, and I think you all are doing a great job trying to take good improvements. Again, I live on Hampton Street. And I still want you all to do something about your bears at home on Hampton Street. It's probably what seven, eight, nine, and it really makes our area look different.
Again, our issue is money. That's, as you're aware, we can only do what we can with the money we've got.
But we are working on it.
We're working on it.
And it's a slow process, but it's going, it'll come to an end, I hope.
Is there anyone else that has comments for council tonight? Please come up and state your name.
Hi, good evening. James Hall. First of all, I'd like to say thank you, James. But, just a concern that I have, okay? The last time that I was, I attended the meeting...
And I understand that this is open to the public, you know, but my thing is that when the next day I noticed my sister's picture in the paper, and my names and people from the community coming, and I wasn't in the way of it, and it was like, oh, so, you know, you complaining about, yes, yes, you know? And, you know, I don't think I'm that tough guy, but I'm just moving back here from New York. And my concern is not me so much, it's my sister, it's my family, it's my nieces, my nephew, it's my sibling, you know? That's ma- my mainly concern, you know, but, and I understand, like, this is public information, but the names, that can't be held anonymous, you know?
I'm not aware of what you're, exactly what you're talking about, because we don't normally...
He was in the paper. He was here last, you were here last month, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah.
Along with Ms. Douglas, talking about the situation, the neighborhood needed more police protection.
Yeah.
The next day, his name and picture were in the paper.
Okay, well, the newspaper, the newspapers at all of these meetings.
Okay.
So that's where they picked it up.
Yeah, they're public meetings, and they're, they're, they're public information.
Anything that's said here, that they've got access to that, and they can, they can do that.
Okay, but, okay, but that's my concern, issue with that. Okay, now, I went back to the community, and, and in the community, I'm having, I'm hearing a lot of the elderly's and things in the community complaining and things about the same issue, but one of the reasons that they don't come to the meetings, because they fear of this situation like this. Just say for instance, I reached out to a couple of them, and they was like, you know, I, I, I can do whatever I can for you, but I just don't, you know, I don't want to get involved, because, you know, I don't want my name coming up, and I don't want to have to have to watch my back, you know? And I said, okay, I can kind of understand that, you know? You know, and being that they're aging things. Now, another thing, like I said, I'm purchasing the property right across from the, from the store. Now, I've seen improvement, as far as the cops coming through, you know, slowing down, you know? But one issue that I, that I have, that I've noticed, across the street where they begins to hang out in that, there's signs over there that says, no trespassing. But I've noticed the patrolman, they'll come past, they're slowed down, but they don't, you know, try to, you know, say, well, you know, move or take a walk, or, you know, and that's my concern, because that's just like, they just saying, okay, well, for, you know, forget them, they're nobody, you know, it's no, I don't understand, how, how they, could you explain to me how that situation works?
Are you think, are you, what are you saying is, if the patrolman comes by, and he sees people standing on property with a no trespassing sign?
Yes.
And they don't stop and ask them why they're trespassing?
Exactly.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The, the situation with that, if, if the sign's up, the person, the home, the homeowner or the property owner would be responsible for charging people with that. There, there are situations where the, the, the police and the chief can work with that person to where they understand that whenever something happens like that, that can be enforced, but you can't just, I could go put a sign up, and it say, no trespassing, and that doesn't give them probable cause to arrest anybody. So, and, and to address the other concern, anybody that wants to be involved in the process of what's going on up there with crime, and they're, they're fearful for their safety, and they don't want their name in the paper, or their picture in the paper?
Yes.
Best thing for them to do is to call the city manager, call the police chief, call me, call, call somebody up here.
Okay.
And that way, it is anonymous, and they're not going to be in, but when you come here and speak, you know, that's part of the process.
Okay.
You know, so I see your point.
Okay.
I agree with your point, but I also agree with the, the right, for the media to be able to do that.
Okay.
It takes courage to do what y'all did.
Yes.
You see what that, I mean, it's getting better.
Mm-hmm.
And I think everybody up here had the commitment to get it better than that.
And I appreciate it.
And it takes time.
Yes.
It takes time. And I personally talked to the chief.
Yes.
And he's got a game plan, and whenever we have folks that come up here and concerned about their community and the safety of it, hey, it's, to me, it's, let's, let's fix it.
Okay.
You don't see that often.
No.
And thank you for coming and sharing your concerns.
And I appreciate it, and I, I want to also appreciate, you know, because I've noticed that they have installed more cameras in the area, so, you know, so I appreciate it, and so, you know, for a period of time, I just pray that it gets better.
There's some things that you don't see behind the scenes, too, just, you know, over the next days, weeks, and months.
Okay.
Just know that we're working towards that end.
All right.
Well, I have a compassion for, for anyone that live in a community, and will have to live in fear, or be afraid of fear, because of how they feel, and they want a better community. That's, that's not good.
Yes.
And I don't feel...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else tonight who has anything for us? Okay, if not, we'll move along. At this time, we'll move along to item number six, which is oath office for our new fire chief. And with great pleasure...
Yeah, get all his family up there.
Yeah, that's what they want.
You will, don't worry.
Good job, Mayor.
You act like you've done it before.
Does anyone on council have comments for the new fire chief?
Best wishes and good luck, and thank you.
Same thing. Proud of you. You got a good group to work with. You got some fine guys over there, and if you need anything, we're here for you.
Congratulations.
Concur with whatever's been said, and congratulations to you.
And this makes me feel really old.
I know. This is great, and please note, yeah, please note the city council is behind you. Moving along, council, to item number seven, the Bridges Street Award and the delegation of project management. If you'll notice, are there representatives here from LKC tonight? Just, okay.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we'll have any questions, but the first sheet on here from LKC, there were three, three bids to do this work. There was a bid from Frankhorn Construction for a hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and forty-five, Columbus Utilities for two hundred and forty-three, six hundred and seventy-five, and SKC for two hundred and ninety-five, one hundred and seventy-five. And tonight, we're asking for a approval by the council based on the lowest bid recommended by LKC, which is a hundred and ninety-one, eight forty-five.
Is this a recommendation of the city manager?
Yes, sir. I would also add that in the motion to award, that we make a clear delegation to the city manager, myself, to execute the remainder of the project.
You got the cart before the horse, but...
Right, that's all right.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Okay. I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, that we make the city manager as a project manager.
So moved.
Okay. Got a second? Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve likewise. Gentlemen from LKC, do you have any comments for us?
No, sir. Once again, thank you for letting me come for the board tonight. We had three good bids here. Frankhorn's a great contractor. We've spoken with them. They're confident in their abilities to get the job done as designed. They did say that procuring materials these days, I'm sure everybody knows, is a little bit of a lead time on that, so ten to twelve weeks kind of expected, but look for some action there, hopefully by mid-December.
Okay, before Christmas anyway.
Before Christmas, we're doing our best to expedite that, so we've already gotten some mittles in, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Council, have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, we have also before us tonight the tax releases. What are your wishes on that?
Move that we accept is presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. All right, thank you. Moving along to item number nine, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, if I may, yield a little bit of time to the police chief to make some introductions and announcements.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Honorable mayor and council, and thank you, manager Christian, for allowing me the opportunity to do this.
I can approach Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cover a couple of things real quick, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to recognize Sergeant Anthony Zepatella. Mr. Zepatella started our agency as a police officer, a corporal. He has since been promoted to detective, and then sergeant over the investigative section. He's done a fantastic job for us. I hope you've heard some positive feedback, excuse me, I can't talk and breathe and read at the same time, apparently. We've had some positive feedback, I hope you heard that, too. He's done us a good job. I think we have a, a good officer, and I think we has a bright future in the city of Hamlet, and I'd like to recognize him before council for his promotion to sergeant, Sergeant Zepatella.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Want to say anything? Good. One thing that I want everyone in attendance to know, that you have a very active and engaged city council and city manager. They're very involved in making Hamlet. I like to say our better days are ahead of us, and everyone I hire, we have several core principles, one of those is pride, and we take pride in this uniform, we take pride in the name of Hamlet, we take pride in the city, we take pride in the direction the city's going, and we take pride in the citizens that we serve. We hold that pride close to us, and we honor that commitment to our community, and we don't, we can't pay the most, we can't give the best things, but I tell you what, we give a hundred percent to the city. And in doing that, council is aware of this, the manager's aware of this, and the community here for the first time, I want you to understand, we do hear what you say, and we are working on plans of making the community safer. The manager's got some plan that we've drawn up, and it's detailed, and I think it's going to make a positive impact. Again, we're limited, like everybody else with staffing, right? We are several positions short, several key positions short, we are working to fill those. But some of the things that, that we have heard, council, the manager, myself, we've started to address, is this paper in front of you. It say, greetings, Mayor Bayless, council. I want to introduce two of our most public and newest staff members. Since I've heard, we've been inundated with animal complaints, dogs. We have packs of dogs traveling this city. I've seen them, I dealt with them. I tell you, I think they know an animal control guy is off-duty because they come out. I had to work this Saturday, as y'all know, and it was just, it was just dog call after dog call after dog. I went from a dog call all the way from Rice, all the way to Apex, right? Dogs, all day. So we hear you. So we went out, and we found Mr. Chance Campbell. He's our new animal control officer. He'll be responsible for all animal complaints while on duty. He sets traps, he coordinates our activities with the Richmond County Animal Shelter. He also will conduct vehicle unlocks, jump starts, and assist Detective Gagnon, who you'll meet shortly, in his enforcement area and aid in traffic direction. Chance comes to us with an extensive background in animal services. He's been on the road a couple of weeks, and like I said, it's, I've told everybody, it's like the adult ice cream truck, right? Driving through Hamlet. People are stopping him and having him as he's coming down the street. Apparently, the dogs have learned of his whereabouts, too. I've included in this his email address and office number, he can be contact. I would encourage council to, if you get a complaint, please send it on up, right? You can CC me, you can call me, or you can go straight and send an email to him, or call him. We're a team, right? And we're all about making this community stronger, making us, getting us where we need to be, and part of that is that we work together, and Chance done a good job of that so far. Chance, you want to come up?
I would say aye.
Fantastic. The next thing we've heard, we heard tonight, you know, we've got some issues in the community, right? We've got some quality of life concerns. So we can either not do something about it, or we can start to fix it. I decide we start to fix it, right? So I'm allocating a resource to make that happen. With the animal control position, and with Detective Gagnon coming on board, we're going to start addressing some of these issues. Detective Gagnon is what, what is going to be called our ordinance detective. He will respond, investigate quality of life complaints by residents. This will include, but not limited to, noise, illegally parked cars, attractive nuisances, like the houses, making sure they're boarded up, things of that nature, working with our code enforcement, trash, dangerous dwellings. Sean will also coordinate department's efforts with the Hamlet Housing Authority. That's his email there, and that's his city cellphone number right there, if you need to get in touch with him. Sean? Stand up. He has allergies, right? This is allergies. Want to say anything? Awesome. Again, I want our citizens to know, I've only been here six months, my sixth month anniversary. I made it, off probation, hopefully, that we hear you, we care about your opinion, and we may not always see it, we are working for your best interest, and we're working to move this community forward, and with this council's support, as it always has been, very supportive council, we're going to get those things accomplished. It's an honor to serve as your police chief, and it's an honor to have these men join our team, and I look forward to the next several years of us working to resolve some of these issues.
Question for you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Is the county shelter accepting dogs now?
Bite oags.
I couldn't understand.
Bite oags.
Oh.
Bite dogs.
Dogs that bite.
You know, I, what do you do in a situation where you got these dogs that are roaming, and they're not biting? I mean, what are you doing with them?
Well, myself and chief, myself and Chief Kelly in Rockingham, we met because the shelter said we can't take any dogs.
Yeah.
That's not acceptable. So we met, and what we found was, there were several large cases that the county had that inundated the shelter, and they had to hold on to those dogs for a year plus. That's why they couldn't take dogs, that's why that's not our problem. So under the last regime, they agreed to set aside areas just for Hamlet and Rockingham, so that we'd always have place to put our animals. Now, the new organization has come in, and we're trying to work with them and really help them find their sea legs. We've run into an issue now where they can't take more animals, because we've taken up several. The county continues to take animals, but I think at one time, we're probably the most active at bringing animals to the shelter. I've told him, we're going to take them anyway.
Yeah.
Right? We're going to catch them.
This has been an ongoing, really been an ongoing thorn in our side over here.
Yes, sir, correct. Well, the issue we run into now is nobody with K-2 has a euthanization certification from the state.
Yeah.
So they're kind of stuck. But we are still taking our animals up there, they're still taking them, and we're going to continue to take them, because we can't continue to let them roam the street. I mean, these, a lot of these dogs are fair, I mean, they're, they're hunting in packs, right?
Oh, yeah.
I won't get into it, but, I mean, they, they, we need to address it, and we can't leave them on the streets, because it's just a matter of time for somebody gets hurt. So we're trying everything we can, and we're going to still take the dogs up there. They're going to have to do something with it when we get it there, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate what you're doing over there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate y'all's support. Any other questions? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Manager, for giving me that time.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief Brown. I'll have a couple more notes, just quickly, for the public to know that Duke Energy is beginning to do some tree maintenance in our jurisdiction. They have, they have made that announcement publicly, and pending whether it should be done close to the end of the year. And if you have any issues about that, you can certainly call City Hall or Duke Energy about, you know, them cutting on your property, but property owners should receive notice prior to that cutting taking place. We are going to have basketball sign-ups beginning October eighteenth. That's a very popular, all of our sports programs have been very popular, people are eager to get out and find things to do for their children, and we look forward to a good participation in that program this year. And finally, I'll just mention, of course, upcoming is the Seaboard Festival. Plans are moving forward, and we hope it's a very successful event, and I guess at this point, we kind of start watching the weather and make sure we're going to have a good weather for that event, but those are the only announcements I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from city council.
Anyone have anything for city manager? If not, we'll move along to item number ten, comments to council. Ms. Covington?
Well, I'll keep mine brief, because we're moving right along, but we have had two promotions and welcomed two new members to our staff, which I think is, is a good sign, getting continuity from some people and getting new blood in, and that, that really makes me happy. I'm sorry, Mr. Hall had an unpleasant experience as a result of coming here last month, but I think sometimes you have to do those types of things to make a difference. It's not always easy, but it's the only way things will ever change, and if they're genuinely concerned, as Matt said, you have the alternative of, of calling either the police chief or him privately, or, or coming before, but please don't sit in your community in fear, because there's nobody there if we don't know what the problem is. Thank you.
Buddy? Mr. Sellers?
Who'd be calling?
Me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just, I'd like to reiterate what Abby said about Mr. Hall and the experience, and if people get mad at you about doing the right thing at the right time, then they really, I'd question if they were a friend or not, and I know it can make it hard to see. I'd like to congratulate our, our chief. Thank you for the hard work and, and the right direction you got us going. Congratulate Trey. I'm sure we're going to keep moving forward and get better, if that's possible, we do get better. I'd like to say about the new animal control officer, Chase Campbell, that's a really important job. Thank you for going in that direction. And Mr. Sean Gagnon, I think he's got a lot of nerve, if he could take that, talking about a telephone ringing, he'll be getting calls day and night, seven days. So thank y'all, and the Seaboard Festival coming up, I encourage everyone to come out, hope the weather's fine, and support us, and anytime anyone has any questions, you can call, the city manager's always ready and willing, and he will help, and as with the council. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Well, I, I concur with what Mr. Sellers and Ms. Covington said. Congratulations to our new fire chief. And by the time we meet next month, the municipal election will be over with, and even though the mayor, myself, and Mr. McQueen, we, we all running, have no opposition, but I would like for the citizens to know that we still need your vote, would like to have your vote, and come out and vote, and show support for this, for this entire board, and we would certainly appreciate that very much. Other than that, that's, that's about all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McQueen?
Basically, I echo what you just heard. Thanks for coming out and voicing your concerns for your community. I've been up there since then, probably seven or eight different times, and I've seen an improvement from what it, from what it was, and I'm not going to be a hundred percent happy until you can ride down that street, and the people that live there don't have to worry about people that don't live there causing them trouble, so thank you for that. We've got some of the best employees around, and unfortunately, with, you know, our limited resources, they don't get everything they deserve, especially in the pay section, but when you've got, I mean, you, you just saw a brief little snippet tonight of what we've got. We've got people that want to make a really good impression and do a good job. Chiefs done a great job, police chiefs done a great job coming in and getting programs and, and things going that's going to get us in the right direction, that's going to address, I've been here twelve years, I think... that's going to get us in the right direction, that's going to address, I've been here twelve years, I think it is, something like that. I, I've never heard somebody from the police department say they're going to address quality of life issues because those are the things that affects the people in this room and, and, and ninety percent of the people in our community, right? Um, we're not all victims of, of violent crime or property crime, but those quality of life issues, they really mean a lot, uh, so thank you for that. Um, uh, Mr. Brown's out here, he, he, you know, he's done a great job for years, got, in my opinion, the best paramedic in, in the, in the area, not even just in the county with Richard Lassiter, um, and, and Trey, I'm just so proud of you for your hard work and I can remember at twenty-one years old on duty at the police department, you running around back there, uh, as a, as a junior fireman. Um, very, 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 um, happy for the, for what you've accomplished, um, and to see the people that come to support you tonight, the people that you work with, um, really means a lot, it really means a lot. Um, Matt's done a great job managing some of our projects going on, um, is things going perfect? No, absolutely not, but we're in a good direction and probably the best as a group that I've seen since I've been here. Um, very, very proud of that, um, we're going to continue to move forward, we're going to continue to do the things that we think's right. If you don't agree with it, come let us know, right, but that's what, that's what we're going to do. Um, the Seaboard Festival's did a lot of work this year, I mean, they have worked tirelessly, I mean, Matt can attest to it. Um, come out and support them, consider volunteering, even if it's just the day of. Seaboard Festival brings in tens of thousands of people and I promise you, there's less than seven to eight people that has put that show on for the past couple of years, very few people have done that, people that's put in twenty and thirty hours a week for months on end, you got some time, give somebody a call up to City, they can get you up with the person you need to get with, come out and help on the day of the festival, consider joining the committee, consider, uh, doing things for your community, right? And everybody wins in that scenario, right? I, I'm just proud and pleased to, to work with these folks up here, uh, over the years, we've not seen eye to eye on a lot of things, but the things that matter and that's the city and the citizens and the, and the employees, we have come together, put differences aside and did what's best for the community and I'm just tickled to death that that's happened and we can continue to move forward and continue to make Hamlet a really great place to live and to start a family, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Now we come to the mayor's comments and it's unfortunate, the mayor always has to, everybody takes my thunder. But that's okay, um, Trey, uh, again, we're so glad to have you and, uh, we're glad to have the, uh, fire department over there. Richard, uh, just does a bang-up job on the rescue and, uh, we appreciate that too, I mean, it just runs smooth. Uh, as everyone knows, we're doing the best we can with the funds that we've got because we have had issues forced in upon us by the county, but, uh, we're still trying to do the best we can with that. The, uh, Seaboard Festival again is coming up, uh, please support the Seaboard Festival, these folks have worked hard. Uh, again, I'm glad that, uh, situation's been corrected up on the north side of town up there and, uh, so it doesn't take me just a little bit, I guess, to get some things done and the fact that you all took the interest to do something and to say something about it because we don't know, I mean, you know, we can't read people's minds, so, uh, we'll keep on it, we'll keep on, keep working on it. Uh, again, as Mr. Martin said, uh, I'm running for mayor again and nobody's running against me. You know, we've got an excellent council, this council has worked together just extremely well, uh, both financially and with the issues and please feel free to call any of us at any time and we'll take, we'll do the best we can to take care of your issue. Um, with that, uh, I'll move along to item number eleven A, which is closed session for, uh, council, for attorney-client, attorney, attorney-client, yeah, conference.
Make a motion, we go in a closed session for attorney-client.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve likewise.